We're going to move into the open portion of tonight's agenda. Before we continue, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended?
No.
Any questions on the agenda for open session tonight? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Before we continue, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will move into tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented this evening?
Motion.
Second.
A long list of items there. Any items for concern or comments that need to be pulled? Or any items for conversation? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, that will take us directly into the superintendent's report time. We'll turn it over to Dr. Isaacson.
All right, a few things this month. Wanted to first thank the LA ambulance district for their generous donation of $1,500 from their golf tournament to student lunches, as well as to the Masonic Home of Missouri from over in Herkylanium. They contributed $2,700. Thank you to Dr. LaRue and Morgan for attending that event. Included a picture of that group presenting a check to our district. As the time of the report, we have 214 students in the district that had negative lunch balance totaling about $1,892. So we still have some additional funds there that will apply, working with our counselors and home support specialists, to meet those needs through the holidays. Included some information in the report regarding, I attended a meeting at the Hillsborough Fire Protection District, at the firehouse there with special districts, which are some of the political subdivisions locally in Jefferson County, and representatives. David Castile was there, along with representatives from Jason Smith's office and from Washington, DC, just to have some conversation about some political things that are impacting Jefferson County, us specifically, and the fire departments. Included in the report this month is also some of the final figures are beginning to come out on the impact of the senior property tax freeze in St. Louis County. It has been pretty significant. There nearly $30 million in lost revenue. I would say Rockwood has published theirs as about a $4 million loss. So of the 30 million lost to the county taxing entities in St. Louis County, 19 million of that was in school funding. So we do not have that yet for Jefferson County. And when we do, I'll bring that to the board. Also wanted to mention that we received our notification that we did meet the requirements for the 169-day incentive payment. So we'll be including that, reflecting all of that in as we prepare for salaries for the '26, '27 school year. And then finally, just wanted to, the parents received an email. It's on our website for the nest, our Fall Nest, if you recall, is an online version. So you can go online and check that out. So want to thank Mr. Renoir, Ms. Tracy Sines, for putting that together, as well as Mr. Quinn for their work on that. Again, it's always a great sharing of information with the district. And our next one will be our one-to-one, which will be a print edition. So that's all I have as far as my portion of the superintendent's report.
Any questions on the report tonight for Dr. Isaacson? I will turn it right over to Ms. Hillbrand for our annual performance report presentation.
DESI released the annual performance report a couple of weeks ago, so I wanted to provide you with an update on that. They do this on a yearly basis. They break it down by both individual buildings and by districts. So tonight, I'll give you a district overview. It is broken down into two separate categories. Performance, that measures student outcomes in our assessments, and that accounts for 70% of the total points. And the other portion is continuous improvement, which assesses the quality of the work the district is doing toward improving opportunities for all students. And that makes up the additional 30% of the total score. So what you see here is the 2025 composite APR overview. That is a three-year average at 81.9. And then you can see how that's broken down in between the performance and the continuous improvement. That composite score is less than a point less than it was last year. So for '22, '23, '24, it was just a smidge higher than it is for '23, '24, and '25. The next slide, we have the total year-over-year trend. So this is where we sat in 2025, according to the APR, which I'm happy to report, it did increase from 79% to 80.5%. In terms of where we are in comparison to other districts, in the state of Missouri, we are in the top third out of 554 school districts. We are at 188. So it's pretty impressive. Again, Jefferson County, we are right in the middle of the pack. The leading district scored 88.2, I believe it was. Could give you an idea of kind of where we sit. The next two slides are, have to do with our performance. So 70% of our APR score comes from the next two slides. And again, this is a district overview of our assessment data. If you recall, all of our assessments, they're given one time per year. So in grades three through eight, kids take both the math and English Language Arts assessment. Grades five and eight take a science assessment. And then upon completion of Algebra I, English II, Civics, and Biology, typically in high school, those kids take, and then of course, exam. So all of this information is the entire district, all of those tests combined. And in this first slide, this is the status measure. So this is the status of academic performance at any given point. So this is just that one snapshot of last year in grades three through eight, typically the last part of May. It is also reported in two separate categories. So if you'll notice, under English Language Arts, it says all students, 75%. We meant 75% of the points. So we earned 75% of the 100 points for all students, and all students is just that, all students. Underneath it, you'll see it where it says student group. We met 75% of 100 points for our student groups. And for us, that includes, your cell size has to be so big. So for us, that includes our students with special needs, as well as our free and reduced lunch tickets. So you can see how those trended throughout the subject areas. Student groups improved in both math and social studies district-wide. So again, that's a district overview. Academic achievement is also reported out in a growth model. Growth is the statistical analysis of a pair of valid score pairs. It's reported in the same way as the status, again, with the all students in the student group. Those definitions are the exact same here. There was improvement in the student groups in science and social studies. We did fall slightly in both areas of the English Language Arts, but we, for several years, have captured all of those points, 12, and we fell just below it. So you get, you don't get 80%. It's either 25, 50, 75, or 100. So if you miss it even by a tenth of a percent, you do fall into that lower category, and that was very close. So that encompasses all of our academic data, all of our assessment data. The next two slides measure the continuous improvement. The first one here is a measure of a student's readiness for the next phase of their educational career. We earn 100% of our points for those students earning a B or greater in a dual-credit or dual-enrollment course, which is awesome. We earned 50%, which fell from last year in the area of college and career readiness assessments. So that is an ACT, an Accuplacer, an ACT Workkeys, an SAT, or an ASVAB. It is important to note that, again, that one was very close. You only get points, one student can only get one point. So if I take the ASVAB as well as the ACT, I get the higher of those points. You don't get to double up on those. Can only achieve one point for the assessment category. We do have all of our students take something. There's a wide variety of earlier going to college, military, or into the workforce. There's an assessment for everybody. Let's see, that's credit. That four-year graduation rate has been, to say for multiple years, reached that of 100%. These are some other categories that fall into that continuous improvement area. We received 100% of our points for all categories, with the exception of attendance. However, it is important to note that our attendance last year was 50%. So we did improve in that area to 75% of our points overall district-wide. Some of those categories, the improvement plan and the LEA response to standards, those are reports that the central office fills out and submits to DESI for approval purposes. The KEA and the ICAP, the KEA is that kindergarten entry assessment and the individual career and academic plan. That's what ICAP stands for. The kindergarten assessment is obviously given in kindergarten, has to be done in the first 30 days of school. In order to earn those points, you have to have 95% participation. And the ICAP is given, is when our counselors in the eighth grade sit down with our eighth grade kids and go through what their future looks like, and what kind of path they would like to take. And again, then that is reviewed every year they are in high school. They can change directions or whatnot. And you get your points based off of 95% participation. It's either all or nothing. You get all the points, or you get nothing. The CTE expansion are actually bonus points that we did earn. For this year, we earned it with the expansion of the EMT program at Jefferson College at the Aron campus. The Climate and Culture Survey, we send out every couple of years. And then that data submission, those are also important points. That's if we turn in all of our Moses, which is a beast, reporting on time to DESI. And we've got several people who work very hard to make sure all of that is corrected in on time. So some key takeaways. Our data shows that as a district, we are meeting students where they are, and we are providing them with a variety of experiences for every kind of learner, whether they're college-bound or going straight into the workforce. Our continued academic focus will be working through those professional learning communities and continue to make data-driven instructional decisions and providing those interventions and enrichment where needed. I am excited about some of the talk that is being had at the state level, where they are going to possibly, hopefully, change the way that assessment looks, so it can be given three times a year. Beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year, so you can show actual, real-time growth in a child instead of waiting until two weeks before school's out and we sit down and we capture, you know, have a third grader sit down and take a two-hour long test. So I'm excited to see where that conversation goes, although they've been having it for a couple of years. It's happening more now. Do you have any questions?
Toward the beginning, some were track, on-track, and some just said track. Was there a difference, or just?
Yep, so there's four different categories. It's emerging, on-track, approaching, and then the top-tier target.
I thought I saw track and then an on-track.
Did I put an extra space in there?
Yeah.
You did.
Oh, I see.
It's just on-track.
I get it.
Thank you. All right, our next item of business with regards to the financial report. However, I do have a motion tonight to approve the 2026 budget amendment number two as it would be presented. So we'll be returning to that motion post presentation. Yep.
All right, we're going to start, could be two kind of separate reports here. The first is reporting on how we're doing, running through this school year, and also comparing it over to the last three years. So there's some things that are fairly typical for this time of year, and then we do have some items that are unique to this school year due to the start of the early childhood program and the high school HVAC. As you'll see, we've received about 21% of our funds as we're counting through the first quarter, here, the first four months, of which, you know, 25% is kind of the baseline, right? That you wanted to use when you're looking at that. So you'll see that we're a little bit over that 25% amount in our expenditures, at 29, almost 30%. That's due in part to a lot of the capital projects and such through the summer. So if you scroll down to the next page, or up to the next page. This is our three-year comparison to look at the different revenue year-to-date and our expenditures. One of the things I wanted to point out, because I thought it was interesting, if you look at the revenue year-to-date, 2023 was $9.85 million. This current school year, so we're three years later, with inflation and everything on the cost of things, our revenue today is actually $10,500 and change, less than it was three years ago, two years ago. So as those are those things, I know the tax bills showed up in my mailbox this week, is when we look at revenue, the district has done, like with the tax decreases, as well as we do have some enrollment decline that stabilized, but it's lower than it was in '23, '24. But our revenue's $10,000 less at this point in the school year than it was three years ago. But we know that things cost more than they did during that period of time. So wanted to point that out, to go through. There's a breakdown in what Ms. White has done. She gives me the reports to compile this, and when we look at revenue across our local sources, county sources, state, federal, other. But I want to point to the bottom, from other LEAs. I want to give credit to our registrar, Ms. Van Lu, sorry for my tongue getting taut, and Ms. White for working on it. That's billing school districts for when their students are at our juvenile detention and other services. This year, we've recouped $115,000. At this point in the '23, '24 school year, we have recouped zero, and we had actually budgeted to only recoup $10,000. So that's a significant revenue increase by just simply asking those school districts to provide those funds, of which, you know, schools pass along. And thankfully, because some of this is from prior years, that the school districts have been paying us even on that. So I'll probably follow up. What's that?
They went retro.
They went retro-bath, which is, we're fortunate from that, and I'm glad that they are. I'll probably reach out to those school districts and thank them for their kindness in giving that square away. But thank you to Ms. White and Michelle for doing that. Also, there's some other additional three-year comparisons. And so as just, we go through year over year, I think it's important to kind of have that as to look for consistencies and things that are way out of whack, or make sure that they're aligning. And everything's fairly stable over those three years. And as far as our revenue realized and our spending, we do have a significant bump in our capital spending, at 6.4 million budgeted this year, but we knew that with putting the $2.5 million down on HVAC and the other work that we've been doing. So along with those line, I'll transition into the next document, which is our debt service. Is Ms. White met with Stiefel, is, I believe, at our December meeting, will be bringing the documents in preparation to pay off two coupons, or scheduled this, well, this year to pay off, I believe it's the 2033 coupon, as well as the 2032 coupon. So which will leave us the 2034 coupon and 2028 coupon. So a little over $1.2 million, $1.3 million will be all the district has left in general obligation bond debt at the end of this fiscal year. And again, 2019, that number is 27, north of 27 and a half. So that's, over that period of time, is pretty impressive for that. So, which leads us to our budget amendment in, which will be the next document, I'll throw up there, is, this is what's submitted before the board for approval this evening, as Ms. White has spent a significant amount of time. Now that we're into the school year, we're able to pull all of our current employees, the salaries are locked in. In July, when we're, June, when we're approving this, we're still in that hiring period. So a first-year teacher's going to be at mid-40s, but if we hire a veteran teacher, and we attract veteran teachers, that may be a $60,000 salary. So all of that's kind of washed out at this point of the year. So we have a pretty firm grasp of what that is, and we actually track that month over month. We started that this year to see any variations, even with the individuals that we will hire this evening, is then we'll add them in, because it changes month over month, as far as calculating that out. So we do have an additional $300,000 in revenue that we expect from the last budget adjustment in July. Our net expenditure increased by $1 million, and that $1 million is due in large part to Fund 20, our teachers. Teacher salaries, salary benefits is coming, came in about close to $700,000 more than what we had originally budgeted for. And so with that, those adjustments have been made. Our capital project alignment with the HVAC money down to $2.5 million, but expenditure increased of $3.2 million. Go a little bit. Our debt service fund remains healthy and stable. I just talked about that with an ending balance. This is after we pay off those coupons, because it was currently 3.385. We're going to pay those off. About $2.4 million, as I just talked about, we have $1.2 million left in our debt. So I've already kind of talked about this particular item there. So if you go to the next slide down here, this is actual, same document. In this document, which our citizens can find online as well, we'll post it on our financial summary page. This is the original document out of our budget book in June. And then the next, if you'll continue down through the next page, put in the one that we updated in July, was with our first budget amendment, which updated the final balances and any changes based on the information that we had at that point. At that time, we anticipated transferring one, about a million dollars into capital. But as the years gone by, we've made some decisions. We're updating that. If you'll scroll down. Yeah, you keep going down. So.
Go to the next one.
Within this document, we evaluated putting between $1.4 and $1.8 million into our capital. And so we're settling on putting in, into $1.8 million into our capital here, using our updated balances from July 1, 2025. And we have our revenues expected, and our total expenditures expected across all those categories, which, if you just a little bit go up, will leave us, anticipate an ending balance, reserve balance of unrestricted funds, which are the funds in Fund 10 and 20, general and teacher. Debt service and capital are known as restricted funds. The activity fund is also part of the unrestricted funds and a part of the fund balances. So we anticipate an ending fiscal year fund balance of 39%. The one in July, we had 42%. But we're also putting that big contribution into the HVAC by putting that, that money down and saving interest in the future over the long term. So still very, very healthy fund balances, as our strategic plan goal is to have fund balances between 18 and 22%. So we're exceeding that by almost double. So, well, this is important as we begin the salary benefits portion of the year, and kind of sticking with our funding plan on that. So we'll talk about that here in the next feature in December and January, as we're already into planning for the '26, '27 school year. So this is our budget amendment. Ms. White has spent hours updating this, and on this packet is multiple pages of all the different adjustments there. And so very thankful for her on that. Any questions?
If there aren't any questions, we will then move on to a motion to approve this amendment. So I have a motion to approve the 2026 budget amendment number two as presented, including the financial projections and that recommended transfer of funds from our operating fund to capital funds. Motion.
Second.
Any other questions on the finance report tonight? None, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, any items of public comment tonight? No items of public comment? We will get into some of our new items tonight, first of which is the Right at School program, before and after school partnerships. Do I have a motion to approve the services, school facilities license, and the building use agreement with Right at School as presented?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or information regarding this program?
I, when I was at the MSBA conference, I sat in on a session, and I was very happy with what I was seeing with what they were doing with a lot of neighboring districts just north of us. So I'm excited to see what they do here.
It is a different structure than our current provider. It's also important to note, there is no, there will be no cost decrease for our families. It's also important to note, there is no, there will be no cost decrease for our families. It's actually a decrease. There's some other flexible, more flexible scheduling. There's a punch card, so they could buy a punch card and go at random times. We're also looking to do a before and after care for our summer school program that we don't currently offer. And also after our summer school program, providing an extended day camp for our kids for, for a small fee that parents could use if they don't have places for their kids to go during the summer months after our summer school program. So it is set up a bit differently than our, than our current provider and this would replace that. But it's more structured play and some enrichment.
See, I was kind of impressed with the, the academic element. You know, still having fun, sure, and enjoyment, but creativeness.
Yes, and our kids will get some leadership opportunities and, and some time to work on homework and they do get some playtime and snacks and so it's not all
To the grind.
Correct, but it is, it is an academic enrichment focus.
Other questions? Okay, here you go, none, all those in favor of approval? And any opposed? Also will provide one abstention. So motion carries. Onto the next item, which is an addendum to the Jefferson College MOU. Do I have a motion to approve the addendum to the Early College Memorandum of Understanding?
Thank you.
Any questions on this MOU?
No. It's a great program.
All right, here you go, no questions, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? And there's one abstention? Motion carries. All right, next is the approval of a lease agreement for the perch rack adapter system. Do I have a motion to approve this three-year lease agreement with perch for the weight room package, 10 cameras and additional, at an annual cost of $14,000? This will total $42,000 over the term of that agreement with funding provided through the athletics miscellaneous account each year. Questions on this system or agreement? All right, here you go, none, all those in favor of approval? And none opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is the approval of a digital recognition and historical preservation platform. Do I have a motion to approve the two-year agreement with Rocket Alumni Solutions and the formation of the Historical Preservation Committee to guide and carry this digital recognition platform as presented tonight?
Motion.
Thank you.
Sure, my little background on this platform for us?
Sure, I've visited with Coach Zaharski and Mr. Groner as well as some of the admin team. One of the things, especially with Mr. Groner retiring, was kind of spurred some of this discussion and there's a lot of history there is this is kind of, not that we necessarily have a wall of fame, that all this could be changed on, but worked with this vendor, this is more of a repository to store basically our district's history. But the thing that intrigued me was more than just an athletic site, it's more of a, a district repository. So I'm going to actually stand here and Mr. Quinn, if you click the explore button, just a quick kind of tour here is this will actually come at, at the high school and we'll be able to have this. It'll be linked with the district website, so somebody at home will also be able to view it, provide access. So it has the athletics portion, which has our records and such as that. But I, I want to focus more on the other benefits of this. If you click on the academics piece. Should open up. Double click on it. So in there, under the academics, we can put up students with our academic awards, students of the month, but even under our scholarships, if you double click on that. A lot of times where our district gives out scholarships, different organizations. But if you have here is I think about, I know that my son received like a Kathy Ringo scholarship, is if that was on here, we would actually probably have a picture, not Kathy, the Matt Ringo scholarship, is you have Matt's photo up there. And then if you click on any one of those scholarships, you'd have explaining what the scholarship was about. It's a way to even better honor the individuals for the different scholarships as well as having the student individuals' names who receive that. If you click that, that's in the lower bottom, there you go. You can go back and see, so, and you go back again. So the showing our scholarships, the different achievements, there's FFA state winners, et cetera. So national merit, awards and all those different academic items. If you go back one more, is we could even, at the high school right now, they have the high school hall of fame. Well, one of the things that's disappeared is if you've been around, it was a long time, there was the big composite class photos. Nobody knows where it is anymore because they had to remove it because the wall of fame has actually gotten all the way down below that. But this potentially is a place to store that information as well. If you click on arts and culture, is here celebrating our fine art students. So you have their all-state musicians. But if you click on artist-owned gallery, highlighting some of our artists, is putting some of their projects literally online where they can visit them if people outside our district. Because that's one of the things too, when you think about the high school or when I was at the junior high, we have classes that paint murals on the wall. And then you're like, I can never take this thing down. Because Jimmy in 2002 painted that, but you know, the high school continues to evolve. The district continues to get old, is we want to honor those, but we still need to progress and let those current students do projects like that. Is also, I believe if you click on Dana or if you just can you click on? All right, I'll go to, there you go. So it actually has a place where we can talk about the student and some of the background to that. All right, so if you go back, go to productions. Because I know, I think there's a show this weekend, is if you click on productions, it's a way to highlight our students and the fine arts. If you click on Carol Burnett Show, that class did that last year, it gives the students in there a little background, allows us to celebrate that. If you go back again, I know I'm kind of flying through this, go back more to the main page there. About Us, in there allows us to show off some of our facilities, a history of even district leadership or building leadership, past principals, a little, some history. I know that Mr. Groner had shared some history even last week on the Bill Henderson press box. Mr. Henderson in 2005, I guess he was sick and Mr. Groner was the AD, recommend that's, I believe he passed in 2007. But some of that history is important history that we need to share, like Mr. Schultz has a lot of that history. It's kind of bringing all of that to explain that is not just athletic history, but when they bought the farm and all those different items is putting that together. So if you go back out, is there's also the opportunity to connect with alumni in the future to highlight some alumni. And on here, this is some pretty exciting stuff I thought, is we'll be able to honor our veterans, our active military, we celebrate a graduation. So if you click on that, literally have their picture, but it gives kind of a biography of where they may be stationed, et cetera. And then if you go back again, Alumni Spotlight, but if you go to yearbooks, we probably would do this four or five years after, so like this year, we'd put up the 2021 yearbook. But if you click on 2010, for those students like John Isaacson who lost his sophomore yearbook, he would be able to go back and actually have access to old high school yearbooks in the past. You'd wait the four years because they do sell those to the students. But if you slide that page over at the bottom there, Mr. Quinn, is if you click on that, that's a high school yearbook from those years. And then if you go back, again, go back one more. Class composites will be the last thing we kind of hit here is put the graduating classes and such, and we'll be able to, to have that. I know that we have like the original graduating class in 1935 and stuff, something like that is hanging at central office. But putting that on and using the yearbooks and kind of compiling our district history here. So this is going to be a big lift from a, you can see there's a bunch of different groups, so kind of coordinating that. There's Mr. Groner, there's Mr. Stevenson, and any other that would like to be a part of that, probably reach out to Mr. Schultz and Mrs. Husky and just gathering a lot of that info, information, and working with Mr. Quinn to get this loaded up and then our communications department would take it from there. But I think it's just a good way to, long-term, provide accessibility. There's more items in here, even the, for our foundation to use and sponsors and people that support the district. But anyone, then you're able to, if you're outstate, moved away, you can connect with the school and you're going to be able to connect with, hey, that's my yearbook, you know, or that's what the children say and such. So there's different galleries, donors and fundraising, some of that that we do with the scoreboards, provide some avenue for revenue creation as well. So that's what this is all about. This is, the board's working on the platform of which that will host that. And so this will all be touchscreen. I didn't show the very first, if you go back out, is this would be located near the gym, I suppose, or in a commons area. If you click on calendar, I do want to show this. If you click on that, does provide all the updates. Someone could sit there, it's a touchscreen on TV and it's actually linked in with our program, so you could have it in different buildings with the different events. If you go back one more, you have to hit the X up in the corner. And I believe that if you click on photo booth, I think this is probably going to go right on Mr. Quinn's head. So this will be set up, the TV actually has a camera on it, but it has like a hawk costume, a football helmet, graduation hat, and students would actually be little kids, we'd probably turn it on, but on events, you can go up, you know, take a picture, and there's actually a QR code and I'll send it to their phone. Those little interactive stuff for the little kids, we can put on there.
And I was just going to ask, is that QR code something we can share out and access it from the QR code, the entire
Oh, yes.
Platform? Awesome. Yeah, I mean, I would love to have this on my phone and just be able to pull it up.
So the iPhone itself will be on the public website?
Oh, it'll be on the public website?
The kiosk piece is in the building.
Yes, so it'll be a touchscreen. The first one I did is like a 65-inch TV. One of the things too, that's on there is all the different trophies, that's something we talked about, is we're going to take photos. If you click on explore, one of the things that you're going to have to click on athletics is a challenge that we have now as the high school, well, the school district's creeping up on 100 years old, is under the trophy room is we'd be able to, when we get different trophies, maybe a third place at the Potomac Invitational, is you take a picture of that and it provides storage. And you're, if you click on the 1954 track, you could actually zoom in, see all the names on that trophy, sort of, and allows us to store some of these items without having to, we're running out of space. And to still have a clean building.
I mean, I think eventually it'd be nice to be able to have one of these TVs in each of our learning centers. And it would really tie in those lower grades into, instead of being individual silos essentially. Yeah. I like that a lot.
Again, we are playing, we are, we are approving the platform tonight and not any like labor effort on the part of this company. We're going to be putting all of this
Yeah, it's included, they do, it's like a Google Drive, so we'll be putting pictures of the trophies in and they're going to help us putting, there's some white glove to that, but it's not an additional cost. We're still going to have to
Over time.
Get to yearbooks and
And then over time, it'll be us that does it, our communications person, okay.
Any other questions on the platform tonight? All those in favor of approval of this contract as presented? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a couple of reports next on the agenda. The first is the food service report. Dr. LaRue, you have to take it away with S. Jones from Sedexo.
Yeah, before I introduce Morgan Jones, our food service director, just a couple updates from the food service side. Last year in December, every three years, we go through a recruitment process. Every three years, we go through a process, oh shoot, I lost my for our food service review. Following this, we, we did that and then we went through the edits and we just recently got our letter back that said we're approved. So everything on our food service side is in compliance with DESI. Recently, I'm sure you heard all about the shutdown, now that the government's back open, some of this information may not necessarily pertain to us, but I wanted to let you know what DESI did put out. Missouri is not processing any more new SNAP applications during the month of November. Free and reduced meal applications, something that parents may not know, that you can fill those out at any time. So if, if something happens with layoffs or just like the shutdown, if you're a government worker, you can fill out those, fill out those free and re-induced meal applications at any, at any moment. So we encourage our parents to do that. And then October reimbursement, we did receive those. If, if the shutdown would continue, we could potentially see delays on payments, but since that's not the case now. And then all major federal programs, including the National School Lunch Program, Breakfast Program, et cetera, were expected to continue at the shutdown. We continue to receive those reimbursements. So it didn't, didn't impact us a lot, but they, they were a little nervous that if it would continue, it could have impacted us. And then Dr. Isaacson also already mentioned this, but if you scroll down, scroll down, Patrick, all the way down. We want to thank the Masonic Home, Missouri Hulanium, Chapter 325, for the $2,700 donation that they used for our student meal debt. And that, I'm going to introduce Morgan, I want to thank Morgan for and Sedexo for the snacks this evening, but I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Hope you guys enjoyed the snacks.
We did, we did.
Did anybody finish the whole pumpkin? That's enough for about three people. So if I haven't met you yet, I'm Morgan Jones, the food service director here with Sedexo. So one of the most important goals we have is fueling students with high-quality meals so they have better energy, better focus and better learning outcomes. So with that in mind, I'd like to share a quick look at the progress we've made so far and some exciting things we have coming up. So you can see on this slide, I wanted to give a year-to-date comparison. We started here in 2023. We were at about 220,000 total meals. In 2024, we took a slight dip. We made some adjustments to our menu, you know, we took some student feedback to heart and really kind of went to the, back to the drawing board and made those adjustments this year. So you can see the fruits of our labor. So we are, we are up and we have rebounded this year in our total meals. So, so yeah, so very exciting. So our breakfast participation increased 17% from last year and then all of cart sales continue to grow. We are at our highest level in three years. We are at our highest level in three years. So we're trying to still continue to give students as much options as possible with those all-the-cart sales. Okay, so, so some ways that we are getting those total meal counts up is with kitchen improvements and grants. So if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, that is, if you've seen a big shiny box outside of elementary school, that is our new freezer. So that actually came about after we realized we had some storage issues in the elementary cafeteria. There were just reach-in coolers and freezers that were lining the walls. So it was just an inconvenience for our, for the students and for our staff to go out there and constantly grab things out. So we applied for this grant and DESI awarded us twenty-five thousand dollars to build this outdoor freezer. So that in turn helped us convert the indoor freezer to a cooler. So that helped with storage space, we could get rid of those reach-ins that were lining the walls. If you go, if you look at the top few pictures, those are pictures of something that's brand-new this year, we're doing second chance breakfast. And so that was, that was brought about whenever we applied for breakfast cart grants. So we applied for those grants with the, at the high school and the junior high. And so basically, second chance breakfast gives kids a chance, exactly how it sounds, gives them a chance to eat breakfast. If they got to school too early and they weren't, they weren't hungry, maybe they were late and they missed breakfast, this gives them a chance between first and second period for them to, to grab a to-go meal from us. And it's a fully reimbursable meal. And, and that has, like I said, our breakfast, our breakfast meals have gone up seventeen percent this year and this has been a huge factor in why those have gone up. And then large equipment. So we're constantly trying to upgrade our kitchens and some of those upgrades have been salad bars, open-air coolers, combi ovens, custom condiment carts, and then gas ovens at the high school and elementary. So I just included some photos of those. If you look at the middle picture, that is a combi oven. And so those are just a really neat piece of equipment that we get very excited about. So that's essentially like an air fryer, an oven, a steamer, all, all in one. It has a computer built into it and we upload our items that we make. Say we want to make chicken nuggets. We'll choose the picture of chicken nuggets, say how many trays we have, and it will make, it will make those perfectly and consistently every time. Our high school staff has lovingly nicknamed this "Thurma," so it's kind of like an extra employee for them. So yeah, so we, we love, we love our new combi ovens. We have those in the high school and the primary school right now. Okay, and then last but not least, so for student experience and menu initiatives, I just want to talk a little bit about what we're doing, you know, for, specifically for our students and, and their experience with us. So we hosted a Future Chefs competition. You can see that in the lower left-hand corner. We, we had four students who competed with us this year. So they turn in their favorite home-cooked recipe and so it's kind of like a kid version of chop, but we don't have secret ingredients. They know what they're going to make at that time. So they compete, they have one hour to make that recipe and it was a huge success. We actually had Dr. Isaac, one of our distinguished judges, so he got to, to taste all the food and it turned out great. The kids loved it. It's just a nice way for them to get involved in culinary arts and kind of, you know, spark that interest early on. So we are actually planning on doing that again this year in March. If you look toward the top, so I want to talk a little bit about, about new menu items. So, so that top picture with the sandwich, that's our chicken, chicken bacon ranch popper sub. What we do is we have limited-time offers or LTOs that we, that we have monthly. So this was one of the limited-time offers. If kids like those, then we bring them back on the menu. So it's just a way for us to keep trying new menu items with them. This was a super, a super popular one, so it is on the menu for good now. We also do things like Lucky Tray Day. You can see the little kids, they love those little hats. So basically, Lucky Tray Day is where they come to the line, we put stickers on the bottom of random trays. If that student picks up a random tray with a sticker, then they win a prize. In this case, our little kids love the hat, so we give them that in a little goodie bag. So it's just a way for us to have more engagement and makes the kids excited. So coming soon, we're going to have Bright Bites Kitchen coming to the primary and elementary schools, so you'll kind of see that marketing change in the kitchen. And we will also be, the menu will be totally revamped. It will be all new menu items at the primary and elementary school and that will be coming in January. And then at the high school, we are retiring Taste Four and the Crete Eatery is going to be replacing it. Same thing, it's going to be all new menu items. It's kind of like more, I would say, like home cooking. So we, we think that the kids here are going to really like that. We've noticed that those are the kind of things that they like is real home cooking. So, yeah, that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I can't thank Morgan enough. She's always willing to, to jump in and help. She's always giving new ideas, not just keeping status quo, helping with just appliance and equipment schedules and so a lot of feedback and we work closely together. And the snacks, of course.
Okay, of course.
And I was at your Future Chef competition as well and it was fun to watch.
Yes, yeah, it was so fun.
And talk to the kids because they were excited about.
Yes, I know. That, we hope that that will create more buzz and we'll get, you know, more kids this year. So yeah, we loved that competition. It was super fun.
Hopefully we'll host it in the Coleman Lab.
Oh, yeah, that would be awesome.
Cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another informational item tonight, which is the Facilities Committee and Capital Budget Report.
If you go to just Slide Five.
Three, four, five.
No. You want to page up? Yeah, keep going to the beginning. Just go to the beginning. Right. There. So the last two or three years, we've met as Facilities Committee about twice a year. This year, we've already met twice. We'll continue to have those conversations, but just wanted to give you a little bit of an update of what our recent conversations have been, what we've been, and then some of the conversations we've had over the last couple of years. Our Facility Committee meeting, some of the very first ones, we've just established a vision statement that, one, supports our own large vision statement, but then kind of narrows down to just what the Facility Committee believes in. I'm not going to read that, but we want to make sure that we just envision safe and innovative, state-of-the-art facilities. And I think you've kind of already seen that with some of the grants that Ms. Hill, the reins, and Scott have wrote with the, the ag, the greenhouse, the fax that's going in currently, the culinary lab. So I feel like we're doing a really good job supporting that. The key priority areas that we've identified, campus site analysis audits, so looking at those, safe and secure entrance for all buildings. Of course, the high school still, still does not have that. Modernizing, modernizing learning environments. And then fourth, developing district-wide preventive maintenance schedules, which Ray and I have been working on since I've, since I've been here. So working through those, those are the four areas that we've identified from the Facilities Committee that are important to us. So just current project updates, we had a kickoff construction meeting actually yesterday for the HVAC at the high school. We closed on that loan on the fifth of this month and so that's moving forward. We're really excited about it. I'm really, I can't thank Justin, our HVAC tech, and then Ray enough. We have currently seven RTUs with heated changers that are bad. And then working, they work with Schneider. Initially, that was going to be about twenty thousand dollars plus labor, our own labor, to change those out, just to throw those away for next year, but they were all so bad, so we had to replace them. So Justin and Ray worked closely with Schneider on, on a plan. And so Schneider is going to come in actually over Christmas break and set, set up RTUs that was already in the scope of work, so this is not additional scope of work, not additional money, but that was already in there and just they're calling an emergency to the contract and so they're going to move those up. And if they come in in time, the, the plan is there, the target date is over Christmas break, so it shouldn't interrupt anything. And that's on the north end of the, the high school. So we will be seeing, you'll, you know, if you're over, here on break, you will be seeing a crane come in and some little bit of construction, but fairly minor. High school facts, culinary, that demolition started on eleven-three. Both sessions, kitchen and Brock Miller don't foresee any setbacks at this time. It's an inside, inside facility, so you won't see weather issues. So as long as everything continues to come in on order, there shouldn't be any setbacks and that's, that's moving along, thanks to the high school staff for your patience. Actually, the building is not too bad. The office, though, can be a little bit loud at some times, so I appreciate the high school and their patience. We've already went over this, so I'm not going into detail, but Dr. Isaacson covered this. This is this year's capital report. We're looking to finish this year at one point seven with the expenditures, that's the, the two point five million down for the Schneider, of course, all the other bids that we, we have fulfilled. So we're going to look about finishing the year there. We still do have five hundred thousand in outstanding capital. Some of that was approved tonight, like the track reseal, I know that was on the building night, so that's about a hundred and ten. We have another bus coming in in around December, January, so there's another hundred and fifty. So we do have a few out there. Working with Jen, she's phenomenal worker, I really appreciate the feedback she gives, but we have no more, no more capital this year, that's been cut off. So unless we have an RT unit go out or something that needs to be replaced, we're, we don't plan on any more, but unless it's already been bought in the board. So as I mentioned, and Dr. Isaacson mentioned earlier, one point seven million is what we're going to about finish the year with. Then you look at your transfers and your allowable revenues, which is like the classroom charge, transportation, food service, energy loans. So that's that one point seven. The tax revenue, the thirty cent capital levy, right at a million, and this is all estimate, but this is for the following year, so not, so we're an end in July with that balance, the potential revenues estimated. And then we have our annual payments, which is just, like the farm payments and some of those that are already built in on those schedules. That's the seven hundred thousand, nearly eight hundred thousand. So that's going to be about our balance next year. Summer projects, district, Aaron's working, looking on a district-wide telephone replacement. So right now, they go to voice-over IP, asphalt overlay on Hawk Drive and Leon Hall. We're actually, I'll talk about that in a little bit. We're actually, actually going to take that project off, Leon Hall, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Sidewalk on the north side, partnered with Hillsborough. Once again, I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. Roof restoration at the junior high and primary, HVAC, of course, concrete repair at the front and back entrance of the high school. We have some dis, some broken-up concrete and then some security items. It says we're waiting for the cops grant. We actually just got that letter recently, I think this week, Dr. Isaacson received that, and we did not receive that grant. So we're going to have to work some of those items in just as the schedule, so. So I mentioned asphalt. This left one is Leon Hall. Initially, the sidewalk was scheduled to come in this spring and summer and then we were going to come in next to it in asphalt. We were told by the engineers in the city of Hillsborough that the funds are not going to be released from Modop until two thousand and twenty-seven, so we are no longer going to be able to, we, we just took this project off. We didn't want to wait until the sidewalk is in before we did this. So we did take that off the bid. We are going to continue with this project. This is a reseal. As you remember, we resealed this area. We're going to reseal here and then this area down to the junior high. We're going to overlay it, it's just a disrepair and it's on the schedule to be overlaid. So that's one project we're going to ask you guys to approve tonight. Junior high roof, that's the, we're going to do a full-on replacement. It's been out of warranty since two thousand and twelve, so pretty, pretty disrepair, some leaking, so we're going to do a full replacement. We're going to ask for that approval tonight as well. And then primary roofs, we're going to look at restorations. Those, one of them just went out and one of them went out in September of this month or this year out of warranty and another one went out a couple of years ago. I can't remember the exact dates, twenty-two or twenty-three, but anyway, so they're still pretty good shape. We're not going to replace them, we're going to do just restorations on those. The good thing is this building, the junior high building, the primary, junior high, and the elementary, once we're completed with these roofings, we shouldn't have to do anything unless a storm, of course, for fifteen, twenty years. So all those should be under warranty for a long time. Of course, the high school is the next big one, following the, this building itself, so. But three of the five buildings are in really good shape with our roofs once we finish this summer. Leon Hall, that's still expected to be two thousand and twenty-seven. The architectural drawings, we have those on our website and as well as in board docs. I'm not going to bring those up, we've, we've hit on that, but we do allocate four hundred thousand to that project that will be additional term lane on Leon Hall. Recent tax initiatives, because some of these projects, you know, may require in the future a, a tax, either whether that's a levy or bond proposed by the district. But just this is local, just want to bring your attention. The recent one, this is Prop S and it's strictly an operating levy, which is strictly was marketed to increase teacher salaries and that recently failed, that was Rockwoods. Small voter portion in Jefferson County, but I highlighted that there at seven hundred and four voters from the Jefferson County. Very close, but it still, still did fail and was a forty-five cent increase. And then the Melville one was also ran in November, but it was just a levy transfer to help with HVAC and buses, so no, no tax increase for their voters, so. These links, you guys can review. These are just older surveys that, for historical purposes, that, that the district has put out for the community. Next slide. These are just highlighted, it's, they're, they're, they're good to be four or five years old now, but I think there's still some of those things we can check off. And of course, the new secure entrance of the high school is at the top. And so that's just historical data for you guys to review. And then some of the, keep going down. And so some of the next steps we just recently discussed, looking at just a Phil Seacet four, three A B, looking to put out RFQ for next year to hire a construction solutions company partnered with that helps with those site assessments and facility assessments and helping assist with those long-range facility plans. And then just looking at narrowing focus and talking about big ideas. Of course, we work hard on doing the roofing and the HVAC side of things and making sure those are on schedules, but the, the big picture items, what our district needs. And so those are some of the discussions that we had and I'm sure we'll continue those discussions with the board at like maybe a workshop at some time, but a lot of great ideas from everybody. The high school secure entrance, of course, is still at the top. Storm shelter, road from the high school to farm, Kiva Spab entry was brought up. And so just a lot of remodeling of the, the baseball field. Of course, these are big, big goals and that will probably take some kind of a levy or bond passing in the future if we want to complete some of these items. But that was the discussion with Facilities Committee and that's kind of what we worked on the last couple of years and we'd happy to answer any questions.
Is Leon Hall going to hold up until twenty-seven?
I hope, yeah, I hope so.
Do some additional patchwork or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we'll have to do some patchwork, especially at the top, by the, a lot of traffic on it, just between Hawk Point and of course, you're running buses on it every day and high school kids in and out, but yeah, I hope so.
Any other questions tonight? All right, well, next several, thank you Clay for the presentation. Next several items are to spend a little bit of that capital approval.
Yeah.
Get into it. Our first item here is the approval of the roofing bid for the primary sections C and D that we saw this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the bid for the restoration from Shea Roofing in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for those primary roof sections C and D? Any questions on this contract? Here are none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the roofing bid for that junior high section A one. Do I have a motion to approve that move to barge roofing for that A one section in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars? All right, any questions on this contract? Okay, here are none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. We also have the asphalt bids for twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Do I have a motion to approve the, the asphalt bid from Meyer Contract in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents?
Motion.
Any questions on this contract? Okay, here are none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. All right. Onto the approval of the MSBA Full Maintenance Service contract for the coming year. Do I have a motion to approve the full service contract with MSBA for twenty-six, twenty-seven as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions on this contract? Renewal, renewal for us?
I just have to say, for my good friend John, why can't we write our own policy? So.
That is what he would say.
That is what he would say, yes.
All right, other questions? All right, other questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed, motion carries. All right, next is our action item with regard to the second read and approval of the policy revisions 2025D. Do I have a motion to approve these revisions as presented?
Motion.
Second.
All right, any questions on these policy revisions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval? Okay, none opposed, motion carries. All right, also have the approval of out-of-district tuition rates for fiscal years '26 and '27. Do I have a motion to approve the '26 tuition rate of $11,310 for non-credit students? And the '27 rate of $11,900? These are in accordance with DESI's expenditure reporting.
Motion.
Additional information you'd like to share on how these are put together?
Yeah, these are using the per pupil expenditure from two prior years. And so that information will be on our district website. I compiled the explanation of the DESI financial data as well as the historical amount. Using a predetermined equation that the statutory instead of those.
I, I'm just curious, how many students does this impact in our district?
In my 12 years, we've had two people pay tuition.
Yeah, I was just, I wasn't, didn't think the impact was that significant.
But it is a DESI requirement that you go through this process and have that.
A point of clarification, if like students from Sunrise, if they would come, in Sunrise, please?
No, yes, Sunrise, the district would pay that.
District pays.
Yeah, when I say two, I mean two.
Who?
Parents.
Yes.
Pay.
Correct.
All right, good question. Any other thoughts, concerns, or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed, motion carries. All right, we also have the amendment to the '25, '26 salary handbook for half-day pay rate for our substitute teachers. Do I have a motion to approve this amendment to the '25, '26 pay rate for those half-day substitutes? It is retroactive to July 1 of 2020.
Motion.
Second and third.
All right, any questions on this amendment? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. Right, and then we have the approval of our fall board workshop minutes from November 6th. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments, or corrections to the segments? All those in favor of approval? And do we have an abstention in this case? Yes, all right, thank you, and that motion carries as well. All right, that is the end of our noon business tonight. Before we adjourn, let's take a look at some upcoming dates. Our next board meeting is going to be December the 18th, which is adjusted for the holiday schedule. And then we will meet again at the beginning of the year for our winter board workshop on January 8th. With the holiday schedule and back to school, is there any concern with that January 8th date for the board workshop?
Weather's good, I hope.
A reminder, we'll make sure I don't have to do it in November, because I know I've read the board sign-ups.
December 8th, 8:00 AM. And closes on December 9th.
December 9th, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, and December 30th at 5:00 PM is when it closes. At Central Office, 100 Leon Hall Parkway.
And that information is on our website as well as.
All right, any questions, any other questions related to upcoming events or the district calendar? All right, that brings us to the end of business tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting at 8:15 PM?
Motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourn? Okay, appreciate it.